Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yep.
All right, I made you a co-host, so you should be able to mute and unmute at your convenience.
Okay, thank you.
How's the weather in Houston?
Sunny and really nice.
Well, it stopped raining here, so we needed it, but it was a lot of rain.
Yeah, for sure.
Feature, I guess. Make you look down? Yeah.
No, lots of kids can't remember.
They took all your brain cells when we donated them.
It's nice to see all the color.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it's like it avoids maybe freezes. Starting to go.
She has no glasses, but she also made everything on her flash屏. Everything she saw, and then.
Yeah, it's clearly getting close to the meeting time. Everybody's got quiet.
Yep, you ready? Yes.
No Luke. I'm recording.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone. Going to reconvene the April 7th Board of Supervisors regular meeting. Just so everyone knows, Mr. Whitson is joining via Zoom due to personal reasons. And.
From Houston.
From Houston.
To work.
Do work. And we are at public hearing period of the day, and we have four. The first one is special exception twenty-four dash zero nine dash zero two.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Janice and Kelsey Moody are the owners of the property. They have requested to operate a two-bedroom tourist home located at four sixteen Rolling Road, identified by tax map number forty-seven dash ten. The property is twenty-one point five seven six acres in size. The property is owned both agricultural and conservation. The home is located on a portion of the property that's owned agricultural. VDOT had no objections to this application. The existing entrance access meets the VDOT private standard, and the stopping distance was adequate. The Health Department commented that they were not able to locate any current or historical septic records for the property. However, however, the county has it listed as a two-bedroom home. Based on those records, the Health Department would recommend limiting the occupancy to four people maximum. The owner did provide documentation for the Class Three C well that was installed in ninety-six. The owner also provided documentation from Brown and Son Septic Service indicating that the septic tank was pumped out on October twenty-third of two thousand and four. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this application at their February twenty-seventh meeting, and they recommended approval by a vote of five to zero with the following conditions. One, a maximum of two bedrooms for guests. Number two, no food services will be offered to the renters of the facility. Number three, this permit terminates upon sale or transfer of the property. And four, this property may not be subleased, rented by third party, or used as a timeshare. The applicant's daughter, Mrs. Kelsey Moody is present here at the board. Do I have any questions for her as well?
Thank you.
Um, say, the public hearing was properly advertised in the local newspaper.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as required by state code. And is there where special exceptions are just that? Uses it, which normally would not be allowed in a particular zoning district. They may be allowed by special permit or special exception because they impose conditions and restrictions on the use in order to make them compatible with the by-rack uses in the zoning district. We require the applicants to tell us why their use is appropriate. And you allow public to tell you what they think about it as well.
All right, Ms. Moody, would you like to speak before we get started?
So sorry.
Any input?
Oh, okay. On on the purpose, I guess. So. Yeah, basically, my my dad was the main user of the house. He passed away, so my mom and me and my family are trying to find a way to kind of make it get more use out of it and kind of be able to hold on to it and make it more financially feasible. So basically, we wanted to open it up and use it. Be able to rent it out since it isn't being used quite as much, so be able to still go. But also having used one rent there.
Thank you. Sorry for your loss.
Thanks.
All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. You can keep seated. For this particular item only. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized. And when you come up to the mic, give us your name and the district you're in. And we will limit this to five minutes per person, please. All right, not seeing anyone wishing to speak in the audience. Opening this up to Zoom, there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to this particular special exception. Please put your Zoom hand up so that you can be unmuted. Not seeing any Zoom hands up. Did I miss you?
I'm sorry, Kimmy Layden, I had to get glasses. I have a little vision problem here.
Okay.
And so if I want to comment or ask a question about the public hearings on any of the forest applications, I didn't get recognized now.
During the public hearing, and we've got four, so if you want to speak during any of them, you have to be recognized. Yes, sir. So right now, we're on the Moody. All right, no hands online, no one in the courtroom. I will close public hearing. And Ms. Smith, if you want to talk to us about the planning commission.
The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this application. I believe the motion was made by Mr. Sis, and seconded by Mr. Atkins. We thought it was a very thorough application that there was also off-site property management that would be able to assist when the family's not nearby. They would be nearby to help if any needs should arise. And it's similar to other applications that we have approved in that area. So it seemed like a very good, a good use for the property.
Thank you. Stonewall, Hawthorne, Hawthorne, do we have anything we want?
It's actually in Peakeville.
Oh.
I think it got adjusted at some point.
Okay. I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. And I just, as I was going to say about it, like I said, there's been several similar applications that we've approved for this area.
Did anyone speak out at your?
That's what it was. Nobody, nobody spoke at the planning commission. It was pretty much just like this.
I'd probably be living here if it had internet.
Ah.
We've done it back in the day.
Interesting.
Beautiful place.
Anything from the board? I am wondering with regards to the Health Department records. I understand a lot of older records wouldn't necessarily be accessible. Is there a timeframe in the county history going forward that?
Well, I think modern, they have very good records that you can search on, but historically, when this has come up in the past, that they use more of an empirical approach. They see that the system has been functioning for a certain intensity of use and then recognize that seems to be working, pump out your tank, and it'll probably still work. Oh, that's why I think they have recommendations for relatively limited use with a number of people.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
If there's no other discussion, I would just make the motion that we go ahead and approve this application with the same conditions that were recommended by the planning commission.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Um, I did have one question on the this is Kier. On the minimum acreage rule under one seventy sixty-six K. Here we have a property that's split between ag and conservation, and I know ag is ten, requires ten and conservation requires twenty. I just maybe just either Michelle Summers or Gary Curry could remind us how we would view a split property from a minimum acreage perspective. I recognize that the property as a whole meets both requirements of ten and twenty respectively for ag and conservation. But I believe in the introduction, the the home itself is on the it was said that the home itself is on the ag portion. So if somebody could just answer that for me, and I'm sorry to hold things up.
No, that's, it actually has not come up for us when it would be a controlling matter. I think, you know, or it's likely in that scenario, we would use a prorated basis of the parcel and where that conservation ag line is, which is somewhat fungible based on site-specific conditions. According to your ordinance, we'd have to go out and actually look at it to see where that line should be and then do a, you know, kind of a weighted average to determine where we were on the twenty versus ten. In this case, fortunately, that parcel is over twenty acres, and so we know that it absolutely meets the requirements.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that, and I think it achieves the goal of of sufficient land buffer that we're always looking for. So that's all I had. Thank you. And I I guess the last thing is, I just want to make sure that I always try to remind myself to ask this, if the applicant is okay with and accepts the conditions that are coming out of the planning commission, two bedrooms, four guests, terminates upon transfer of the property.
She acknowledged it.
All right, nothing else for me. Thanks.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. Moving on to SC twenty-four dash ten dash zero two.
Thank you. Donald Mullin and Patricia Vernon, the owners have requested a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit pursuant to one seventy thirty-six A and sixty-two G for the property located at fifty Spider Mountain Lane. The property is thirty-three point seven zero one acres in size and it is owned conservation. The proposed ADU will be for the owners as they will convey the land and existing home to their son. They plan to build a one-story plan that will allow them to age comfortably with their family. Additionally, the owners plan to design and site the accessory dwelling unit to minimize impacts to the neighboring parcels in the existing wooded area to be preserved as much as they can. VDOT commented that the property is currently being served by an existing private entrance. The nearest state-maintained secondary route is Route six hundred, which is Swindler Hollow Road. Based on field observations, the private entrance meets VDOT's private standards, and the stopping site distance is adequate. They had no concerns or objections to the request. The Health Department recommended that the property owners consult with a licensed on-site soil evaluator to draw plans for the septic system and well that will be adequate for the new dwelling. They would also need to submit for construction permits. If the OSE concludes that the existing drain field would be sufficient or could be amended to handle the capacity of the new dwelling, then a moderate modification permit would be required through their office. There is an indication of a Class Three C well on the property and a construction drawing of the existing septic for the main dwelling, but not any details as far as the existing septic capacity or the water yield for the well. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this application on February twenty-seventh, and they recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. And the applicants are present here tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, so I'm Bren Sonnet. I am the daughter-in-law to the applicants. My husband and I will be taking over the property and building the ADU for my husband's parents. And I don't have much to add. I think really our discussion that the planning commission was more or less that ADUs are kind of, this is the purpose of them, is to allow families to live together and or the older generation to be able to age gracefully. As far as the Health Department comments, obviously, we'll satisfy all of those. They had a comment about utilizing the existing septic system, which we do not think is feasible. We would be putting in a new septic for the ADU, and we have yet to get the well tested, but it may work depending. And we have yet to get the well tested, but it may work depending on the outcome of the assessment, so to, to be determined.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing for twenty-four dash ten zero two. Anyone wishing to speak? Please be recognized.
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I just want to point out that this ADU application, in my perspective, is very different than one that came before this board recently. I'd also point out that Donnie spells his last name M-U-L-L-A-N. Full disclosure, I, I know the applicants. I've known them for a while. They've been in this county for decades. They contribute a lot to the county. They've been good stewards of their land. Donnie used to be a builder, and I have confidence that if they're going to do something, it will be done appropriately. And yeah, I, I'd like to see them stay. I think remembering all the bedrooms are up, up flight of stairs, so this is probably going to serve them well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the courtroom? All right, no one in the courtroom raised their hand or came up, so now we're on to Zoom. Anyone wishing to speak on Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any Zoom hands. I will close public comment and open it up to the board.
The planning commission pretty much went just like this. There was, Karen commented, we made a similar remark as the planning commission. I know Mr. Sisk had been up there extensively, walked the property, and felt everything was well in hand as far as the application and the intentions of the applicants. And that they had really put a lot of thought and deliberation into what they were going to do. And I have to say, to my mind, you know, we have ADUs in the ordinance, and if if we allow it, and you know, there's the little checkboxes in order to permit it, and certainly on a a nice-sized parcel like this, we should, we should permit it.
All right.
So, but as always, I would turn to my fellow board members to see if you all have any concerns. I, I do hear the talk about the septic and the water, but it does seem like those are normal details you would walk through in any building permit, and I don't think we felt the need to impose any additional requests of the applicants for those details.
Yeah, tho- those will have to be resolved prior to getting a building permit.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any other discussion?
I always really appreciate seeing people staying around Pana County. And this is why we have ADUs. That's a great application.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll take care. So do you all have any concerns about the, the conditions of the application?
Which there are none.
Other than as, as requested, as presented by staff.
Madam Chair, this is Kier. I just, just wanted to say on a personal note that I've really been fortunate to have Bryn Sonnet, Sean his neighbors up the road from me in Harris Hollow, so I'm sorry to see them go, but Taco Band's comments, this is a great example of the kind of thing that we want to encourage from his own perspective. Bryn and Sean are, they grew up here in Rappahanna County, and they're staying, and we want to see more of that. So if I could vote twice for this, I would, but I only have one vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion, ma'am?
If there's no further discussion, I would, I would make a motion that we approve the Mullen AD, application for ADU as presented in the packet this evening and, and recommended by the planning commission.
I'll second.
And if I've been mispronouncing any, I apologize.
I'm not mispronounced, just.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No votes.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thanks a lot.
All right, we're moving on to public hearing twenty-four dash eleven dash zero two.
Thank you. The owners have requested to operate a two-bedroom tourist home located at 202 Yancey Road, identified by tax map number forty-eight dash twenty-four. This property is twenty-eight point two-one acres in size. This property is again, both agricultural and conservation. VDOT commented that the proposed use does not produce any additional traffic volume that would negatively impact the current access to Route 621, Yancey Road. The health department commented that their records indicate that this property is limited to an eight-person occupancy with a fifteen-hundred-gallon tank and a six-hundred-gallon per-day limit. They recommended an annual water sample be collected to ensure the potability of the well water. The planning commission held their public hearing on this application at their February twenty-seventh meeting, in which they recommended approval by a vote of five to zero with the following conditions. A maximum of two bedrooms, four guests, compliance with the health department regulations, no food service to be offered to the renters of the facility, the permit terminates upon sale or transfer of the property, and this property may not be subleased, rented by a third party, or used as a timeshare. Mrs. Alderman is president, who is one of the owners, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you.
Want to speak?
Sure, I don't really have much to add, other than you say that we would like this special permit just for this period of time. We have three sons who are teenagers, and we you know, we just haven't been able to come out as much in the past few years as we did when they were younger. But we certainly want to keep the farm. It's important to us. We want the boys to have it. My youngest son says he's going to live here someday, so we'll see. That's it. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. That's, that's basically our.
Thank you. All right, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to this special exception, please be recognized. All right, seeing anyone in the courtroom, anyone online wishing to speak, please let me know by showing your Zoom hand. Not seeing a Zoom hand, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll open this up to the board.
It was, it was mostly pretty quiet at night on the planning commission, as you can tell. You know, it kind of followed this pattern, and we, again, it was sort of like a broken record meeting. I know we've approved permits back in this area before for the Jenkins and for other residents of the road. And there's an ability for people to be on-site if needed. If any kind of help is, is needed, and it's a, it's a large enough property that there's not concerns about the size of the property. All the details seem to be in good order. I just think it's so cute. I, I'm like, are you sure you want to rent it out short term? So, and it makes me happy to think that your family would maybe live there again one day. So I mean, was it unanimous vote of the planning commission to recommend approval on this application as well?
If someone has it as a tourist home and then decides somebody's going to move in and make it their permanent residence, is there anything we have to do? Is there anything?
Well, using it as a dwelling is by right use, so they can do that anytime they want. The only, if you were to adopt or approve a special exception with a condition that it terminates on sale, then if that happened, they transferred it within the family, the parents to the child or something like that, it would terminate. And that individual new owner would have to come back in if they wanted to have short term in the future.
Yeah. Any other discussion? This one is Stonewall Hawthorne?
Well.
Fine, Miss, on the side of Yancey, you're on.
The, the Magisterial District versus the Voting District can be different.
No, no, the Yancey is solidly in Peckmont. My line goes down.
That's today's voting district.
Of what he's on?
The Magisterial District, and the records could be different.
Oh, yeah, 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 totally.
But that's not important.
That's not important.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Sure. Does this mean I get this part of the count? I'll make a motion to approve, let's see, application SC twenty-four dash eleven dash oh two with recommended staff conditions. Are they the same as the planning commission? Or the recommended planning commission conditions?
I think they're the same.
Yep, yep.
All right, we have a motion, go up second.
One second.
All right, any discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't, this already.
I'll second.
Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. SC twenty-four dash eleven dash zero three.
Last time for me. John and Margaret Weiss have, they're the owners and have requested a special exception for a tourist home pursuant to 17063E and 17066K. They wish to use the first floor of the old store for a one-bedroom tourist home. The property is located at 105 Utown Road and is identified by tax map number forty-three dash eleven. The property is only four-point acres in size and is zone agricultural. I will note that advocates seek a waiver pursuant to 17066K four that requires the minimum block size and ag to be ten acres. The board can waive the minimum acreage requirement only if the property has frontage on a paved public road that is part of the state primary secondary system. This property fronts on state secondary route of six forty-two. Currently on the property, there's the applicant's home, the old store that already has a two-bedroom apartment on the second level. A special use permit was issued back on October the third of two thousand to conduct church-related activities and services on the first floor of the old store. The applicants in their application also mentioned that they wish to host pop-ups, events for real, retail sales and food, which is not permitted in their current special use permit nor for this application, and they have been made aware of that. VDOT commented that the proposed change in use does not produce any additional traffic volume that would negatively impact the current access to Route 642. The health department commented that the septic records indicate that this property, including the house, store, and apartment are limited to a twelve-person occupancy with an eighteen-hundred-gallon septic tank and a nine-hundred-gallon per-day limit. They recommended that the septic tank continues to be monitored and pumped out every three to five years. Within these parameters, the proposal may be deemed acceptable. There were no previous records for a well log or water sample. They recommended that the well have, have a clearance of twelve inches from the ground to the well cap and be tightly sealed to protect possible contamination. They also recommended an annual water sample to be collected to ensure the pot, potability of the well water. Again, I'll note that they have asked for a waiver for the minimum acreage. To date, that waiver has never been granted. I would like to also point out that if, if approved, this would open up the door for about thirty-five other properties along that same road to make the same application. The planning commission held their public hearing on this application at their February twenty-seventh meeting. They recommended denial of the application by a vote of three to two based upon setting a precedent of less than the ten acres required by the code. And then also the definition of a tourist home being rented in its entirety. At that meeting, the planning commission also requested that the county attorney review the definition and opine on that definition, and I do not believe we have received anything to date. The applicants are present. I'm sure they would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Any of the applicants wishing to speak to the board before we open the public hearing?
Sure. Hey, thank you for having us tonight. I, I did send an email to the, to each one of you, so I think that kind of helped a lot, as well as we had. I know it's unusual, and I know it's concerning for a setting a precedent. I think the, the, the path might help our position is that we were, lots of things going on there for many years, and initially, as a business, which didn't work out for us, you know, things like the post office pulling after you, and the gas tanks having to, you know, come out and all that kind of stuff. But then we had the church there for many, many, I've said fifteen hundred times, more. Anyway, the, I think with Mr. White, Mr. Shuland were indicating was that we're different. I know it could open, you know, you've got thirty-five other properties that were just mentioned. But were they more intensive use going to a lesser use, or they converted from a house to a tourist home? I think there's that difference. And I think the rest of you probably have already heard, so I'm happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for this final special exception. Anyone wishing to speak? Please be recognized and come up to the mic and give us your name and your district.
My name is Jim Waters. I'm in Giv brown hollow, whatever district that is. My wife would laugh at me if I could track those things. Well. Fire, fire station up in Little Washington.
Okay, and you are Hampton District.
Okay, thank you. Switched out at Falls Church, you know, so my mind's still trying to clear from Northern Virginia. So, so thank you for doing this. I do know the applicants. I've gotten to know them the last couple of years in the community and church and other situations. I think our dogs are best friends at this point, full disclosure. I come at this a couple of different ways, and just try to be quick about it, but to say that I have been in renovation and preservation of historic properties and old properties for four years in my work. And in Arlington, I was actually the first person ever to get a tourist home license before there was ever Airbnb or anything. And we'd actually built a website before all that, five years before all those companies. And I used to manage thirty-four properties and do this as a business. And we saved some special properties in Arlington that were being just torn down to the place by creating a different model with more income. And we were loved by the neighbors for saving ten forty-seven, twenty-two fifty-two, certain properties. Hundred, hundred twenty-five years old, people wanted to see state, save. They're beautiful. I don't know about the other thirty-four, thirty-five properties that are similar. I don't know if they have a general store. I don't know if they've been part of the community in that same way in history. But it seems like these hearings are to look at the specifics of each situation. So specifically, to me, got great applicants from the community who want to stay in the community, who've had an unbelievable number of events of their properties without violations and problems. They're about as proven as applicants I think you could possibly get. And yeah, again, I don't know what the other thirty-five properties are like, but to save the old general store on that through street with a lower use than they can be approved for in other ways, it seems like the, the acreage is probably, in my opinion, related to load, and if the loader use of the property that they're seeking is actually less than other options, together with their people, the community established in the community, I mean, hosting fifteen hundred, two thousand community events, it's hard to be more established in the community than that. I look at the specifics of their situation. I look at the specifics of their situation. And I know our history, having saved some beautiful properties in Arlington and that we were root for, and I think, yeah, very fit for this for a community, and I'm part of this community now. And I'd like to see places like that preserved instead of just torn down and replaced. I've done a lot of building in Northern Virginia. I've seen a lot of places just torn down and replaced. I'm saving a hundred and five year old, beautiful little structure on my own property right now. And people say, oh, why is so much work and effort? Why would you do that? Because personally, I think it's worth it. It's part of the community. It's a touchstone. People know these places and see these places. And it's a touchstone in the county I'd like to see approved. And and I say confidently, because I have enormous confidence in these people and in their hospitality and and their good nature that they show in the community and would show others in the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your color Jackson District, I haven't studied this well enough to really know the answer. I just realized there are a lot of these old stores are going away, unfortunately, but I think we've got a couple of different zoning things going on here, which would be there's been some presumed special exceptions to get where it was. This would be another exception. And I'm a little concerned about precedent setting in the county. We had a big fight a few years ago about the use for a tourist home for the property up in at the end of Get Brown Hollow and Harris Hollow. It was pretty ugly and mainly because it didn't suit the ten acre zoning requirement that was reduced to five acres at one time to five acres and then determined through the Department of National Commerce to be a void evidence yield. So at this time, we're set at a ten acre zoning for our ten acres to minimum for that. I don't know the complexity. I I'm sorry, I haven't studied this enough, but the complexity of the store and pop-up things and that. Perhaps I can answer more about that, but I just think we ought to be cautious about setting a precedent.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Hunt, Jackson District. There are a number of things that stand out with this application. There's already a lot going on on this four point eight acre parcel. There's a three bedroom, two bath house. There's the old store building, which also has a two bedroom, one bath apartment upstairs. There are a number of other buildings and structures. There has been a history of septic and drain field problems on the parcel. The applicants purchased the parcel or the property in November of nineteen ninety-two. In two thousand, a special exception was granted to permit church activities on the site. In May of two thousand four, so just four years later, a new septic drain field was installed. A right of way encroachment agreement was granted by Radhanic Electric to locate the drain field in the front right area of the parcel. In two thousand seventeen, a Virginia Department of Health malfunction assessment was submitted noting affluent on ground surface ongoing for many years. In December of two thousand seventeen, a Virginia Department of Health construction permit was issued, but then expired in June of two thousand nineteen. The Virginia Department of Health permit was then reissued two years later in July of two thousand twenty-one, and a new septic drain field was installed that year in the left rear parcel behind the house, store and garage buildings. A waiver request of the V H D of V H D, B D H survey requirement from two thousand seventeen indicates permanent structures within two hundred feet of the new drain field as well as within two hundred feet of a neighboring property line. It appears there have been three separate drain field locations on this four point eight acre parcel, two of those in the last thirty years. There's a lot already going on there, at least three permanent structures, various outbuildings and enlarged parking areas. If there is another septic failure, it may prove difficult to find another suitable location on this parcel as it appears already constrained by multiple buildings, previously previous drain field locations, former gas pumps and tank location, and the neighboring property and their well need to be considered. Our comprehensive plan, principle three, page eighty-six, notes number two, prohibit land uses if they have significant adverse environmental impacts that cannot be eliminated or minimized. Number five, ensure the best management and prevention measures for potential groundwater pollution sources, including but not limited to septic tank, wells, et cetera. Principle number seven of our con plan, page ninety, is cited in the staff report and subsections of this principle go on to state. Specifically, number four, allow certain commercial development that by its nature must be located in sparsely populated areas near agricultural operations or near existing neighborhoods or on specific sites to be so located if. G, the development does not create environmental degradation to soil, air, groundwater or surface water. The church that prompted the special exception permit in two thousand moved into their new building on Waterloo Road on January or on January eleventh of two thousand nine. The youth alive activities now operate at that Waterloo church site. The addiction recovery services operate at the Reynolds Memorial Baptist Church in Sperryville. It does not appear likely that these activities that originally instigated the two thousand special exception permit will migrate back to the Butown Road location. Per our ordinance one seventy dash eight states that a tourist home is rented in its entirety, not by lodging unit to a single party of guests. Allowing a tourist home in the same building as the existing second floor apartment that is accessed from an interior staircase that has been in existence for at least thirty years would seem to conflict with this section. That seems akin to me seeking permission to rent out my basement because I have an outside door that tenants or guests could use. And if I just fold my interior interior stairs door shut, that's a separate space. To clearly separate the second floor apartment from the first floor into two separate and distinct uses would require a different special exception application or duplex. Any of these scenarios exacerbate the already non-conforming situation of multiple buildings and multiple uses on the site. The request for a waiver of the minimum ten acre acreage of the ten acre acreage requirement, sorry, in Agzoni would set a concerning precedent, and if approved, the county will likely see a flurry of future applications for more tourist homes from others asking for the same consideration. Per zoning, there are currently no other tourist homes operating under a waiver of the ten acre minimum requirement. One application was submitted in two thousand twenty-three. The planning commission recommended denial and the application was withdrawn prior to the board hearing. There are thirty-five other properties that could ask for the same waiver consideration just on Butown Road. I reviewed a B dot map of the county. We have a lot of paved secondary state maintained roads in the county besides Butown Road. We just recently enacted a two-year ownership requirement to slow down the conversion of residential to tourist homes, residences to tourist homes, taking action that encourages waiver requests of the minimum acreage requirement is contrary to that goal. Allowing the conversion of small apartments and accessory buildings such as garages, barns, equestrian facilities and the like will be eligible for tourist homes by weakening in any way the intent of rented in its entirety. This would allow the conversion of smaller, more affordable rental stock out of our already tight rental housing market. This does not serve our community.
Thank you.
If this special exception were granted for the building official. I have three sentences left.
Okay.
A change of use from commercial in commercial space to residential in a commercial space would be necessary. And a stamped commercial plan from a regulated design professional and an architect or engineer would be required. There may be building improvements required such as fire separation upgrades between second floor apartment and first floor commercial space, but the building department cannot determine what would be necessary without a stamped commercial plan.
Thank you.
I'm not sure there's an awareness of that.
Thank you.
Approval of this would set a worrisome precedent, appears to conflict with parts of our ordinance and our con plan, please step down. And I respectfully request you deny the application.
Yes, ma'am.
Short and sweet as I was earlier, I hope. Four point eight acres.
Your name?
Oh, I didn't even saw it. Anita Ramos Hampton District. Four point eight acres, way too small. We'd just be opening the door for everybody with under ten acres and even smaller than this to apply for this kind of thing. The other thing is the fact that there's already a living space in that building and two of them make a duplex in my book. That would mean three properties in an agricultural area on four point eight acres. I suggest you deny.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right, not seeing anyone else in the courtroom, anyone on Zoom wishing to speak during the special exception, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, no Zoom hands. I'll close the public hearing and I know you wanted to speak one more time.
Yeah, okay.
Please, no.
Thanks.
Yep.
Mentioned the pop-ups and the retail, that was an idea of mine. I was trying to bring the community to the end, but we agreed to back off on those and just center on the tourist home applications. That's all that we're looking at. There have been two drain fields, not three. The original one that was there, I don't know how many years, when we moved there in nineteen ninety-two. We did in two thousand four apply for a drain field. We never put it in. We delayed putting it in because at the time, we had probably eighty people from church meeting there and and the drain field would have been a lot larger to accommodate that. So we operated the same drain field all the way up until twenty twenty, I believe, or twenty twenty-one. And yeah, twenty twenty-one, we put a new drain field in for six veteran, that was what was we were told to. And we we pumped that in September, October this year, so we did it in three years. So so yes, that that nineteen ninety-two, the old drain field down the hill had been failing, so we put the new drain field in. There's only been the old one and there haven't been any other failures. Something about neighbors, veterinary neighbors and compromised neighbors, not only positive support from our neighbors. And I guess the the other thing I would say is the idea that people could come up with wanting to do something as a because they go down their base or whatever. I think what's different here is we have a grandfather property built in eighteen ninety and had all kinds of things going on. And we tried to be good stewards of that as long as we could operate them, that we couldn't, and like I said, circumstances happen. I know I'm probably against time, but but we're not asking to do even equal to or more wanting to go down less. And and actually, the dimension of youth life, COVID killed it. We moved in February twenty twenty because of social distancing, so that wasn't us kicking them out. The COVID, youth lives there twenty years, we belong to New Harvest and we just moved it over there. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Margaret, Margaret Weiss. I think it was mentioned, we do, there is a separate door, outside door that goes up into the apartment of store. So you don't have to go in the store to get up into the apartment. It's separate. And just because we love where we live, it is a historic property. It's eighteen ninety historic general store in Radhanic County. And no one else has that. And that's what's special, that would be what's special about being there as to change the use of it like we are asking. And also to hopefully with that, we have lots of wineries around us and then the Amosville Market and Laura Mills. You know, doing all doing things and we're hoping that we would also be of benefit to that and anyway, that's what I want to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will open it up to the board.
Well, as you can probably guess, this was the point in the planning commission where we did slow down. And obviously, this is an interesting application in that it is an historic property that has had some relatively intense uses approved for it in the past. I think actually Ms. Summers did excellent job summarizing the challenges of this property in her introduction. There was quite a bit of discussion at the planning commission about whether or not the previous use of the property warranted consideration to be an exception to the ten acre rule. And also to have a home and an apartment and a short term rental one less than five acres. There was extensive conversation about that. And it was not a unanimous vote. And Mr. Light and Mr. Shuland thought that it should be permitted to be a tourist home. Myself, Tommy Sisk and Tommy Atkins voted to deny the application based on the intensity of the use on this size parcel and that it is, we've never approved an application less than ten acres so for agriculture and I think I think maybe Mr. Whitson said when we when we've talked about it in the past, it would really have to be perfect. And this is not perfect. It's tough. Clearly, you are lovely, community minded people with a very unique asset that you are needing to figure a future for. I just don't think this is the right fit. And the listing of all of the properties that could follow suit if this is approved only serves to confirm that in my mind. And I think this is, this was not discussed at the planning commission. But I think we would be hard pressed to say in court that this had a very, this had a pretty intense history of day use. And so for that reason, we decided that to break all the rules and approve it for short term lodging as an overnight use. Because it is a different kind of intensity. It might not be as much traffic, but it's kitchen and bathroom and somebody's gonna live there. And I'd be interested to hear from my fellow board members and happy to answer any additional questions that anyone may have.
You didn't seem like very lovely people and I absolutely appreciate and love that you want to undo something with this historic building. But as you, I'm sure are aware, we are guided by this beautiful yet complicated thing called a comprehensive plan. And spread all over our comprehensive plan are words like tourism, families, agricultural, rural and scenic. So when I'm considering a, you know, an application like this, I've been heard people have heard me say many times, I look first to our planning commission. You know, I say they go in first. And on a split like this, that's tight, the three, two, I looked into our comprehensive plan that many before me meticulously and carefully crafted that together with zoning, our zoning that helps put in place the the things, the very things that bring the tourists to our county like our scenic and rural roads, our, you know, sparsely populated spaces, our dark skies. So when I take that into consideration, I I go back to, I can't get past the four point eight acres because that does start to break away from, like I said, the zoning and the Because that does start to break away from, like I said, the zoning and the ordinances that we have put in place that are, our strict zoning are now admired and envy by other localities. Being the junior board member, however, I would like to hear from my other colleagues, but this is where I am at the moment.
Thank you all for this application. This is a hard no for me. This is less than ten acres, and since I've been on this board, I have not approved, or even before my time, heard of anybody approving any less than ten acres. When we do special exceptions, what we do is we layer on top of the current conditions, other conditions that would make it comport with a by right use. But the threshold condition is the one that's in the ordinance, which is ten acres. I could see waiving that condition if this were nine point eight. If this were eight point nine, maybe, for other reasons. But when you have a use that by right, because your property is zoned agriculturally, you can do some stuff there that's by right, very intensive, and I know that because I own a burger here in the county, which is by right, you don't have to ask anybody, there's a lot of stuff you can do. So the question of how intense the use is, is it doesn't necessarily play into a special exception. When zoning ordinances are written, the body sits and says, what do we want portions of the county to look like? And the tourist home is a unique. And what's been happening a lot, and this is not what you guys are doing, but what's been happening a lot is they're commercial uses, they're not people living on the property, which is fine, that just happens. But what the board decided to do was to create a buffer so that it would at least maintain Rappahannock. So this ten acre requirement, to me, is very important. And for me to, to, as sitting on the board here, to wanna waive that, I'd have, I'd have to see very specific things that have nothing to do with the intensity of it. That I have to do that would make it similar to the acreage. And for me, that's not here. And I really do appreciate the fact that you guys care so much about this whole store because they are incredibly cool, and Rappahannock used to have lots of them, and they're disappearing. So my heart goes out to you for real about that, it absolutely does. I just, I can't, I can't, I can't waive the requirement for this one.
Mr. Whitson?
I guess I would just echo most of what everyone said, I do think this is a really interesting property, and I think the last statements about it being historic and appealing to tourists is, it's, that's all great. And I think that the land buffer thing is always something on which I'm aligned with Mr. Carney, it's, it's sort of a hard no, but one, one additional piece of this that I wanted to at least add here, and it's not to pile on by any means, because I, I too really appreciate the sincerity and earnestness of the application and the applicants. The one thing I would add is, our board is under constant pressure to find ways in Rappahannock County to expand what is often referred to as quote-unquote affordable housing. And whether you like that term or not, or you know what that term means, the way I see it is that long-term rental properties are few and far between, we all see it. And that's not to say that, you know, we would ever force anyone to do anything that don't want to do with their property, including in this case, if you choose not to rent out a property on a long-term basis, it's your choice, but from a policy perspective, from our board, I think we do have to stick to the zoning ordinance and only under, as Ms. Smith said, under perfect conditions, fudge on the minimum acreage rules because there's a land buffer component of it, and then there's also an affordable, or we'll just call it rental housing stock component of it, and Mr. Kohler brought up a contentious application that was for a property up between Harris Hill and Good Brown Hall Road, and at that time, and I know Mr. Kohler won't appreciate me bringing this up again, but at that time, the minimum acreage for ag, I think it was two, and for conservation was five, and that was having the effect of real estate agents putting out ads for small, rare, small properties in Rappahannock County to hopefully attract buyers who could buy them and then immediately rent them out on a short-term basis. Mr. Carney put forward an initiative last year, I think, requiring to your to your ownership requirements, so that takes care of some of the absentee property owner problem. Here, obviously, that's not you, but the second part of that is the minimum acreage and ensuring that these small, rare properties at least as a possibility remain in our housing stock for long-term citizens is important to all of us. And I think I also have to agree, Mr. Carney said, well, if this was nine point eight acres or eight point nine, I think we'd be having a different conversation, but this ten and twenty acre minimum rule in our ordinance is pretty hard and fast. And it's something that was developed and implemented after a lot of painful discussion and back and forth. And I really hate that you're kind of on the losing end of those decisions in the past. But I definitely cannot support those for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, not to put you on the spot, but I, you've got some strong people on the planning commission, I'm surprised at a three-two vote. Do you recall the discussion that the two?
It centered around, you know, that it was a store at one time, and so there were a lot of people entering and leaving, and so it was a, a pretty intense use at that time. That was the linchpin for it. We went down some, sometimes you could get down some interesting roads in the planning commission discussion. Brian Shuland remembered that there was like a hostel-type application at one point called Parapin Station, that was kind of a similar application, like someone living upstairs, someone short-term renting the lower level, and it was, and it was denied. So you know, it was, it was, it was a good mix of discussion, and that's also, this is also the genesis for the earlier discussion of of what constitutes a unit, the rental, the unit that you can rent in the
Entirety.
In the entirety. And, you know, we ultimately decided that it would, it would be the whole store. And I, I do, I'm really hard-pressed to say to think that you could, that you could shore up an approval with the history, when really you're approving it for future use and justify it, and that way, I think we'd be leaving ourselves in a very vulnerable position. And I, I had this heart-to-heart with the applicant at the planning commission, I think there's probably a great use for your building. And sometimes when you come to this board and the planning commission, you don't, you don't get the right fit first time, and maybe we have to hear a future application to get the right fit. I think there's been instances with dog kennels and training centers and things that we've been denied at one time, but we certainly don't want that to deter people from finding a place for their business or their property in our county.
Long-term rentals, obviously, we need those in the county. Not multi-story, but, or multi-units, but definitely, I, if I were you, I would look at that, I used to own a restaurant, completely understand what COVID did to pretty much all the small stores and mom and pop shops, and so I understand where you are, I just, I'm sorry that I too, I feel like we make laws for a reason. And I will do my best not to break the rule that we created for a reason. I would even have trouble with eight point nine acres at this point. I really think we've got enough of our citizens telling us we don't need more tourist homes that I will stand as fast as I can to say, if you're not gonna follow what we said, then you can't do it. So. All right, I don't even need a motion yet.
Well, I then move to deny special exception number twenty-four dash eleven dash zero three.
Have a motion, go on a second.
A second, I do think we should attach some reasoning for the denial. So we would have a record.
Absolutely.
For findings.
A motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Let's touch.
Do you want to, sir? I think her intent was to request amendment to the motion to
Yes, that, that, the, I recommend the motion include the finding that there is a ten acre minimum for this use in ag, and we do not, will not make that minimum finding there already to be a house, an apartment on this property. And that according to the definition, it should be rented in its entirety. It's not compatible with the upstairs apartment. And also for the precedent that would set for additional small parcels in the area.
Is that agreeable?
That's a friendly amendment?
That is a very friendly amendment, thank you for bearing with me while I leave to hear what I say.
Ms. Smith, do you second?
Do you accept my amendment? And I'm so happy to flip out now. Would you, would you mind repeating that, Gary? I just want to make sure it's, it sounds, do you think it sounds okay?
Well, it sounds okay if that's what you intended. So what I got was a motion to deny the special exception twenty-four eleven oh three. One, because the ten acre minimum in ag is not going to be waived by the board, in part because there is already a house and apartment on the property. And this would exacerbate that non-conforming situation. The definition for a zone is the, suggests that it would be rented in its entirety, and that's not compatible with the existing building that has an apartment upstairs.
That's correct.
And then the precedent with respect to the small acreage parcels up and down the town.
Yes, thank you so much for rethummerizing this, Gary, I wanted to make sure we had this captured for the record.
All right, so we have a motion that was accepted, we have your second?
Yes.
Open for discussion.
Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. All right, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Whitson?
I said aye, yeah.
Thank you. All right, and no opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that is the end of the public hearings, we now go into public comment. Yes, ma'am. Sign out.
For Bricksby Hampton District. This may seem slightly trivial in light of all the heady things that we've been through this afternoon and this evening, but I would be remiss if I let this pass.
Oh, pardon, yes.
Let them pass.
Yes.
On Friday evening, I realized I wasn't the only one having this problem. And I found that out because I posted something on RapNet. We have what my mother and I would refer to as a menace in our community, driving a UPS truck on Long Mountain Road. He has nearly head-on hit me one time. He's almost run over me. He is rude, he is unkind, he drives thirty-five miles an hour straight from Rock Mills all the way to our driveway, which is causing a great deal of work for VDOT, trying to repair our roads and fix things. And when I posted this information, it was brought to my attention that if you say anything to this man, which I have done on more than one occasion, I have been told that the speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour, and that's what he's gonna drive on a gravel road that's not wide enough for two vehicles most of the time, much less a UPS truck and a regular vehicle. On Friday, he came flying around the corner, I was on my side of the road, coming up the road. When I saw him, I stopped and started to back up, he proceeded to come at me, drove through my flowers. And when I made it impossible for him to pass me, he informed me that he was not sitting on the flowers on the side of the road, and I have pictures. RapNet brought in a number of other women that are on this route, including on Tiger Valley, and I have pictures of what the boxes look like when he pitches them out of his truck, because they've said something to him. And at this point in time, when we live in a rural community, where driving to go purchase things doesn't always make sense, we rely on UPS and FedEx. Oh, and I forgot, he's driven on my brass, he's not even allowed in our yard anymore. And I'm not trying to get this guy in trouble, I just don't want him running the route on Long Mountain Road anymore, and when you call UPS or you go online, you have to pay a dollar, which I understand, because they probably would get a whole lot more complaints, to complain about a driver in a situation that's occurring. So at this point in time, I'm not really sure what can be done about him. But he is going around basically harassing people by throwing their packages out, and I'll be glad to share the pictures, speaking rudely to people that live on the road and pay the taxes for it, and it's costing VDOT, and I'm pretty sure at least twenty percent of the problem, maybe fifty percent of the problem we have on our gravel road is that because of this guy doing thirty-five miles an hour straight up a hill that's not big enough for a UPS truck and a car. And, you know, I thought I was the only one that was having issues with him. Clearly, I'm not. So any recommendations or help that the board can provide? If VDOT talked to him, if we, we have had discussions about putting up signs for the speed limit to be lowered than thirty-five on this gravel road, but at some point in time, this guy is either gonna kill me or somebody else. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Karen Hunt, Jackson District. I don't have any specific prepared remarks, but I was hearing on the radio today, Tennessee is having really bad weather. We know what happened down in western North Carolina and around Asheville. And it just occurred to me that, you know, we have the mountains out here, and we have some steeper slopes. And I don't know if we've given any thought, or like, what if we had torrential rains and we started to have, you know, issues out here, whether it's flooding or people not being able to get past their, you know, get over a bridge that's over there, do I know people, you know, where that happens? Like, I truly understand the, the, the the relevance of these old cliches that you hear as a kid, but they're real, like, God willing, if the creek don't rise, make hay while the sun shines. You know, those things actually happen, so that's one thing. And then the other thing is during the winter, when we had a lot of electrical outages and so forth, I had a series, and this has happened before, of what I call brownouts, where you don't lose full power, or it comes on and off, and things are kind of wacky. And I've spoken with Rappahannock Electric about it, and they acknowledge that, and what they say is that, you know, they kind of heard from people that rather than it, you know, when branches touch something or it clicking off, that they heard that people would rather have their power flicker than go completely out. But this happened yesterday afternoon. And I literally was making a cup of tea in the microwave, and my microwave just went off, and I'm like, oh, did that just die, really? And then I'm here in my refrigerator doing weird stuff. And then I, I go and I look, and it had actually tripped a breaker on, on my, my panel. So I'm gonna obviously need to look into getting a whole house search protector, but I just wonder if there are other people that are having these issues, if any other constituents have said anything to you. And just the nature of, you know, those brownouts can be really dangerous, so. Um, if any other constituents have said anything to you, um, and just the nature of, you know, those brownouts can be really dangerous. So. Um, flooding and do we need to be concerned for the people who live out closer to the park and Rappanak Electric brownouts? Thanks.
Just a quick question. I'm Helen Curtis from Wakefield District, Debbie. Um, listening to the tourist home was actually a very good education for me tonight. Um, and, um, I've put together a new acronym, um, born here, been here, uh, returned here, BBR. So that's my new acronym for myself. Um, so I'm just interested in listening to the number of advocates for tourist home. Do we keep a, uh, record of the number of tourist homes that are in the county? Is that a number that we have? What's that number?
So you can do that right?
You, you, you got it.
Seventy to ninety.
No, I'm just, I'm in, and, um, uh, Mr. Whitson, um, also spoke about. The applications for tourist home versus the, uh, the neediness of, um, affordable housing. Uh, so it, it just interests me that we continue and they all seem very. Needful, um, to vote for tourist home, but we're not still answering the. We're answering the problem of affordable housing, that we quickly make these decisions for tourist home. Yet we're, don't stop to think about, would that be a better fit for affordable housing? Um, I'm in the position of working at the food pantry and to know with people all the time coming in saying, I don't have a place to rent. I tried to rent this house. It's too expensive for me. And I'm just wondering, do we ever stop and think, why do we continue to? Um, vote for these tourist homes that seem to be. A fine fit for that particular person, but are we looking for the greater need within our county? And I'm just wondering if we ever really stop to look at that moral problem. Just my thought of the day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go put in a lot of hours and a lot of work, all of you, and it's not an easy job and a lot of big decisions that affect the county in the future. I just wanna thank you for your service.
Thanks, very, very.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, thank you. You sat up here many times.
I think we're done in the courtroom. Anyone online wishing to speak during public comment, please raise your Zoom hands. All right. Not seeing any Zoom hands or closed public comment.
Can I bring up something from earlier today? Can I just say something?
You don't see why not?
I think it would be wise, what you guys are having this discussion about the tourist home stuff at the commission.
Yes.
To have a discussion about the waiver language. We can just yank that out. Ten acres.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you, except then, you know, if we should ever want to, then we could.
Well, what if we, I mean, in my mind, the way that if it's. Clear, it's clear, it's clear, clear, clear. So, uh, all I'm saying is that I'm not, I'm just saying, maybe have a discussion. You guys were literally talking about it.
And, and to Ms. Summers' credit, I think she is. Rightly discouraging to people with less than ten acres to defy and say, hey, you, you can pay your money and take your chance, but it's never been done before. It isn't like she incur, I don't think she encouraged people to both buy under that use.
Yeah, I mean, so we're all, I think, simpatico in the sense that we respect the, well. We just understand, I think, at least the ordinance, but boards change and shift and. You know, the waiver language, I, I just think it makes it kind of squishy in a way that maybe is working against us. Because I think it maybe gives people false hope. Yeah, cuz. I don't, I, I, I just, it's hard for me to envision a situation where we waive it, because then we can really start going down that. Odd legislative path where the next one, and then that, that's where we get into some weirdness.
Yep.
And if we don't have clear guidelines for when we waive it. If you waive it without the clear guideline, it can be a whole can of worms.
Yep.
So anyway, I was just like, you guys were literally talking about this section of the ordinance. So I was like, maybe just talk about.
Yep.
It would be fine by me.
Okay. And, and the, that entire section is in the ordinance amendment. Not shown to be any changes in that section, but it would be easy to adjust anything in one thirty-six six K. And I'm really curious if we're a big one, but everyone has to say.
Well, we've never used it, so, I mean. I would be foolish to think I knew the minds of my local commissioners.
Looking back, it would have made a change on what has gotten approved. It has sent several hundred dollars. That, you know, if, if those folks, if anybody would have talked to me and said, hey, and I'm really like, well, I don't know what I'll do, but I can tell you, I am not inclined to waive this thing that I think is very important.
Yep. I agree.
It is, um, it's an interesting discussion, but I think of what you guys are doing at the planning commission, man, you guys have so much fun.
Yep, it'll be fine.
You'll be fine.
Mr. Whitson, anything from Houston?
Houston.
Any problems?
Any problem?
Sunny and warm.
Yeah, sunny, warm, not raining. Yeah. Okay.
Um, there are no, no, there are no problems in Houston. Thanks, thanks for letting me dial in and, um. Yeah, thanks, thanks, everyone. Um, I think. All the hearings tonight were. Managed very efficiently and I, I appreciate everyone's thoughtful comments and, and all the applicants and everyone else who attended tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Carney?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all. When you get back here.
Next week. Yep, see you. Thanks.